Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, May 12th, 2020 Board of Selectments meeting. I'll read the agenda. At 7:00, we have citizens input. 7:05, we have a COVID-19 informational update. 7:15, we have a dog hearing continuation. 8:00, we're going to be talking just a, the town manager evaluation process. Oh, nope, I skipped one. 8:00, town meeting, potential change of venue. And then at 8:15, town manager evaluation process. 8:30, assistant town managers update. 8:40, town managers update. And 8:50, selectmen's update. And then we have six action items. Ed, you want to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So, under citizens input, we did get an email sent in from a citizen requesting that we read this tonight. It's from Dennis Norton for Everett Lane. "Thank you, members of the board. Since Governor Baker directed people to wear masks and properly social distance, my observation is that this has not been happening as it should in Foxborough. On the contrary, most people seem to think that as long as they are outside, there is no need to mask at all. Like a number of others, including seniors, I walk every day on Beach Street. On a single day, walking from Everett Lane to Mechanic Street and back, a distance of two miles, I observed that I was the only one wearing a mask out of the 17 people I encountered coming towards me. This is typical of every day. Beach Street has a sidewalk only on one side. That means that every time I encountered others without masks, I had to leave the sidewalk, cross the street, and walk in the street until they passed because they made no effort to socially distance. The people I encountered include joggers and bicyclists, whom health authorities say leave a trail of breath vapor extending significantly further than the six-foot social distancing health authorities prescribe. It is not safe for people, especially seniors, to be forced across dangerous and well-traveled streets such as Beach Street. Since the governor did not define social distancing in his order, I believe that the Board of Selectment has a duty to further define what proper social distancing means in Foxborough. I am requesting that the Board implement a requirement that people walking, jogging, or bicycling on roadways with a single sidewalk wear a mask because there is no other way they can properly socially distance. I am sure that we all want to do the right thing to assure our mutual safety, and I believe that we will all benefit from the Board of Selectmen taking this action. Thank you." Since this is a citizens input, we really can't discuss it here and now. Any thoughts on?
Michael, what was that?
Did you say something, Leah? No.
No, one of our participants online, under the line, Michael Lombardi, just so you know, you're not muted.
Okay, I wasn't sure if I was even on, so thank you.
You're on, we can see you, hello. So, just know, if you can go on mute while you're not speaking.
Okay.
They can hear you on TV and in the room if you're not on mute.
So, maybe we'll put it under new business for soonest we could do. Talk about it as two weeks from now.
Right.
All right. 7:05, COVID-19 update.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as of 4:00 this afternoon, the latest numbers in Foxborough are that we've had 96 cases in Foxborough since March 15th. We currently have 70 people who have recovered. Total of 18 people are currently positive at this time. Total of seven people have been lost in the follow-up process. 559 people have tested negative, which is good news. And three people remain in the hospital. Those same three people have been, I believe, have been hospitalized for the past two to three weeks. So, hopefully, they'll be coming out of that pretty soon. And we've had one person who's deceased as a result of COVID-19 complications. Norfolk County, there were 7,046 cases as of 4:00 this afternoon that occurred during the beginning, from the sense of beginning. 663 people have passed as a result of complications from the virus. So, we, I think, ranked are, currently, Norfolk County is ranked third in the state in terms of severity of cases. Middlesex County remains number one, and Suffolk County remains number two. Let me just give you a quick rundown of the report that I received from the Board of Health this afternoon. The Health Department posts updated COVID-19 information, resources, and links on its website. More information on tonight's topics can be found there. The website is www.foxboroughma.gov/department/health/covid19. The Department continues to provide daily updates to this office. The governor's essential services listing is updated frequently, and the Department is reviewing this order daily to respond to questions, concerns, and complaints. The Health Department is awaiting guidance and timelines for the reopening of businesses in the Commonwealth. The Department is working to prepare for anticipated changes and to be ready to share the new guidance with the community. The information related to the opening plan that's come down from the state is the following. On Monday, the Baker-Pleito administration announced a four-phase approach to reopening Massachusetts' economy amidst the COVID-19 pandemic and published mandatory workplace safety standards that will apply across all sectors and industries once reopening begins. The goal of the phased reopening, based on public health guidance, is to methodically allow certain businesses, services, and activities to resume while protecting the public health and limiting a resurgence of the COVID-19 cases. Phase one will be a start, and limited industries will resume operations with severe restrictions. Phase two will be cautious. Additional industries will resume operations with restrictions and capacity limits. Phase three will be vigilant. Additional industries will resume operations with guidance. And phase four will be the new normal. Development of vaccine and/or therapy enables a resumption of the new normal. Businesses and activities that provide COVID-19 essential services per Governor Baker's March 23rd order will continue to operate. Certain businesses and activities with a lower risk of COVID-19 transmission will open in earlier phases. Decisions and timing will be influenced by public health metrics for when the first phase of reopening begins, as well as when it is safe to move into concurrent phases. Additionally, the Department of Public Health and the COVID-19 Command Center, in consultation with the Reopening Advisory Board and based on feedback from the industry of labor, industry, labor, and community coalitions, has developed a mandatory workplace safety standard to reduce the risk of COVID-19 transmission as employees and customers begin to return to workplaces during the first phase of the reopening. These mandatory workplace safety standards are applicable to all sectors and industries that will be open in phase one and create new workplace requirements for social distancing, hygiene, staffing, and operations and cleaning. These standards are being released to give workplaces time to plan and prepare for the reopening. For social distancing, all persons, including employees, customers, and vendors, should remain at least six feet apart to the greatest extent possible, both inside and outside the workplaces. Establish protocols to ensure that employees can practice adequate social distancing. Provide signage for safe social distancing. Require face coverings or masks for all employees. For hygiene, provide hand washing capabilities throughout the workplace. Ensure frequent hand washing by employees and adequate supplies to do so. Provide regular sanitation of high-touch areas such as workstations, equipment, screens, doorknobs, restrooms, and throughout the worksite. For staffing and operations, provide training for employees regarding social distancing and hygiene protocols. Employees who are displaying COVID-19-like symptoms do not report to work. Establish a work plan for employees getting ill from COVID-19 at work and a return-to-work plan. For cleaning and disinfecting, establish and maintain cleaning protocols specific to the business. When an active employee is diagnosed with COVID-19, cleaning and disinfecting must be performed. Disinfection of all common surfaces must take place at intervals appropriate to said workplace. In addition to these mandatory standards which apply to all workplaces, the Reopening Advisory Board is developing sector-specific safety protocols and best practices that will detail how particular industries should operate upon a reopening. The Reopening Advisory Board is scheduled to provide its full report to Governor Baker on Monday, May 18th. The Board of Health continues to review sources of the guidance for the reopening of restaurants while awaiting information from the state. On Friday, the U.S. Food and Drug Administration issued two documents, a checklist and an infographic, designed to assist retail food establishments that may have been closed or partially closed during the COVID-19 pandemic in preparing to reopen. The two documents are designed to help businesses that prepare food to serve or sell to the public directly, such as restaurants, bakeries, bars, and carryouts, protect employees, and protect public health as they reopen for business. In working with our Boards of Health, the Mass COVID Team is using contact tracing program to help flatten and reduce the curve of the spread of the COVID-19 virus. Contact tracing is an important tool, and the Mass COVID Team is part of the Community Tracing Collaborative and created by Governor Charlie Baker. Everyone who has tested positive will get a call from our public health nurse, Deputy Chief EMS, Deputy Chief of EMS, Thomas Kenvin, the Hearn School Nurse, Jen Roenberg, or the Mass COVID Team, making sure that they have the support they need to quarantine and get better and to find out who they have recently been in contact with. The team or the public health nurse will then talk to those contacts, encouraging them to get tested and to stay at home and not to spread the virus further. Together with massive testing and hospital care follow-up, contact tracing is absolutely essential to stop the virus and to get our communities moving again. The state is working to get the message out about this support initiative and has released a campaign to encourage residents to answer the call. I'll do a further discussion of this during my report later tonight, but we are actively working on our reopening plan for the town of Foxborough with input from several different factions and in groups, other towns, other cities, other employees, also from, actually, the Board, certainly, if they have any ideas they've come across, we certainly welcome that. Anybody from the community who has ideas can certainly present stuff to us as well. So, we do have a lot of information that we've collected so far, and I think we'll be able to have a good plan. We hope to have a first draft of that available by the end of this week. So, that's the latest.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Still a little early for the 7:15, and I think some people are going to be zooming in at 7:15. So, Ed, why don't we do a few action items to get us to that point?
I make a motion to accept a $4 donation to the fire department from the Stop and Shop Community Bag Program.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to accept an anonymous donation of $25 to the fire department.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve a Sunday entertainment license for Starbucks Coffee, number 59326.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve the Foxborough VFW Post 2626 for billiard and pool table license to expire May 1st, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve a Sunday entertainment license for Helix Foxborough LLC.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve Board of Selectmen meeting minutes for April 28th, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, cut those things through. Close enough, I think, to continue on the dog hearing. Just as an update on that, the owner of Lincoln did have the opportunity to rehome Lincoln up to New Hampshire. The home that's taking Lincoln in is sort of like a foster home for a little bit. They're going to do some training and evaluation. And from what I understand, I think, believe, there's a couple of families that are interested after the training to actually adopt Lincoln. So, ultimately, from my point of view, what we were looking to do in allowing the Flins to rehome, we did. From this point, where should we go at this point? Do we need to? I know there was a question that, believe it or not, way back in the first meeting, a month ago, if the dog did move out of state, did we have to do anything further? I think you raised that question, and I think, Dave, you mentioned that we might not have to. Kate was listening in at the time, and don't believe she said one way or the other. So, I guess introduce yourself to those that are home and...
Be happy to do that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Patrick Costello, Town Council for the town. I know that this matter has preceded my appearance here and that the Board has heard testimony from the complainant, as well as the animal control officer and the Flins. The Board, in essence, is bound by the provisions of Chapter 140, Section 157, in this particular instance. The town does have a nuisance dog bylaw. However, where a dog is complained of as a dangerous dog, the Board is limited by the parameters of Section 157 in terms of the action you would take. Once all testimony has been heard and evidence has been submitted before the Board, a motion to close the hearing would be appropriate. Then, at that point in time, the Board would deliberate upon, number one, its finding, its determination, which would be, number one, whether or not the dog is a nuisance dog, if that is what the complaint requested. Number two, whether the dog is deemed to be a dangerous dog, if that is what the complaint asserts, which is the case in this particular situation. If the Board should conclude that the dog is a dangerous dog, it is required to implement at least one of the remedies that is set forth in Chapter 140, Section 157. Those remedies are as follows. The dog could be restrained by order of the Board. The dog could be confined to the premises of the owner or the keeper of the dog. When the dog is removed from the premises, the owner must muzzle the dog or restrain it with a chain or other tethering device. Alternatively, the owner of the dog could be required to keep insurance in an amount not less than $100,000 against any claim that may result from acts of the dog. The owner could be required to provide information identifying the dog throughout its lifetime. Or finally, in the most extreme situation, the Board can order that the dog be euthanized. So, if this Board does render a determination that the dog is a dangerous dog, one or more of those remedies would be appropriate pursuant to the statute. Where a dog, as in this case here, has been removed out of the jurisdiction, and it's important to note as well, that the provisions of Chapter 140, Section 157 are valid and binding throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So, the Foxborough Board of Selectment orders these conditions. They are enforceable anywhere else in the Commonwealth by local authorities. If the dog is outside the jurisdiction, I would suggest that it would be beyond the reach, if you will, of the requirements of the statute. However, in a situation such as this, where the Board does have evidence before it that the dog has been removed from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and is out of state, you can't order that that take place or that that be required. But where, as in this case, the owners have voluntarily exercised that option, remove the dog out of state, I would suggest that the Board would be within its rights to issue an order mandating that the dog not be returned to Foxborough or not be allowed within the territorial boundaries of Foxborough. And for the purpose of public safety generally, one or more of the other types of remedies could be imposed in the order to secure public safety in other communities within the Commonwealth if the dog were to be relocated back within the state. So, I do think that under these unique circumstances, the Board could, even though you wouldn't be ordering that the dog be removed from the town or from the state, you could issue an order basically maintaining the status quo, that the dog be kept out of the town of Foxborough, and add 1, 2, 3, whatever you deem appropriate of the other types of remedies to secure the public safety in other communities of the Commonwealth should Lincoln be brought back.
Any questions from the Board? Leah, were you able to understand all of that?
I was. Thanks. Thanks for checking, Doc. I could hear all that perfectly.
Okay.
And, no, we do have a couple. I don't know what, you can see everyone, right, Doc? You know, we have a couple of people on the phone as well.
Yep, yep.
Bill, just a procedural thing. The last meeting, you swore people in the, Kate commented. Do we have to do that again with this?
In this case, we probably do.
Yes. If the Board is taking testimony from any individual or accepting further evidence, it should be presented through sworn oath during the open portion of the public hearing.
We haven't closed the public hearing, so...
Yeah, the public hearing is still open.
It's still open, yeah.
So, I guess the question is, is anybody going to offer testimony in this case or are they just going to offer comments?
Especially those zooming in.
Or in person.
Or, absolutely.
I would say perhaps a comment or a question.
Okay.
Go ahead.
But...
No, I mean, you're just asking me if you're asking about swearing in and stuff like that. That's, that was, I thought, the question.
Right. So, the question is, if you're going to offer any testimony in the case, then the answer is, you probably would need to be sworn in. But if, you would need to be sworn in. But if you're not, if you're just going to offer a comment, then that's, I think, when would be the appropriate time? Right now or during the hearing? Okay.
Yes, anyone can offer a comment at any time.
Okay.
And if we do, you know, maybe we can just let everyone know who's on the phone and kind of who they are, because I know I don't know everyone on.
Oh, anybody that's zooming in, does anybody want to make a comment?
No, my name is Janice Flynn Lombardi. At this point, I'm not looking to make a comment.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Jamie Kelly, the owner of the dog that was attacked. I just have, I just have a little, I just want a clarification, that's all, I think.
Okay.
So, that was a lot of language and a lot of, you know, I don't know, things maybe I don't understand. So, are we saying that the dog is not going to return to Foxborough or the state of Massachusetts?
Yes.
Yes.
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, we've had lots of conversation with the Flins. We are in good, very good, you know, circumstances and terms. I'm just, for clarification, that's all. Really only for my, because of my 10-year-old, who is petrified of, was petrified of the whole thing. That's all. Just clarification that I can assure him that this dog will not return to Foxborough, I guess.
Yes.
The dog will not return to Foxborough.
And, Doc, just because I'm not sure, I know that the dog is being rehoned, but where is the dog today? Is the dog in Foxborough or has the dog already been moved to New Hampshire?
Already been moved to New Hampshire as of Saturday.
Okay, great. Thanks for the clarification.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, it may be beneficial for the record and for the public at large if the Flins, you know, under oath, could just offer to the Board some statement or testimony as to what the current status of...
So, before you do that, I got to swear you in. Okay? So, just raise your right hand. Swear to tell, both of you. Yeah, yeah. Swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Okay, thank you.
So, there's a good time to just say...
Yeah, he's currently in New Hampshire. He's going to be rehomed in New Hampshire. They got a couple of families that want him. They're just going to go through some basic training, you know, come and go, because he's not an aggressive dog when it comes to humans at all. So, that's really all they're doing. They're just doing their homework. So, when they rehome him, that they're comfortable saying, hey, this, this, and this. You know what I mean? If he shouldn't be around little kids, which isn't a problem. Or, in this case, unfortunately, a puppy was hurt badly. And obviously, before that dog is introduced to another young dog, puppy, introduction is going to be taken place when it comes to any dogs, introduction. That's all I got to say.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, unless anybody else, any other thoughts? Take a motion to move the public, uh, close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those...
I guess I'd...
Go ahead, Leah.
I was just going to say, I know this was a tough situation for everyone, so thanks to everyone's, you know, patience. And I'm glad that we were able to come to a resolution, you know, that worked out good for everyone, since it is a tough situation.
And I think I just have one more thing to say. Yes, Leah, thank you for your help personally. I think you helped me as the owner of the puppy. It was a devastating situation. Nobody benefits from this situation. The Flins don't benefit from losing their dog. And we needed the direction of a Board and an animal control officer. It wasn't a decision that we really could make in our own for the safety of our family, our relationship with the Flins. We have a neighborhood that's full of puppies. It was just a really hard thing that really couldn't be put on us. And it was just, I just wanted to be understood that. I never want anyone else to ever have to go through a situation like this.
We don't either.
But, you know, like, never. You know, my, you know, my 10-year-old is still recovering. He was walking the dog, you know? But, that being said, I think decisions need to be made by the outside parties in the best benefit of everybody. For us to be thinking that we were going to make a decision for our entire community or neighbors was really hard in trying to, like, still, like, have this good relationship with the Flins. And we do, and it's the best situation that it can be. So, just this whole thing that a decision like this never has to be put on an emotional family, you know what I mean, that's trying to make decisions for anyone else, if that makes sense.
Perfectly so.
Okay. So, that's really all, the only reason why I came today. And, you know, we feel for the Flins too, that they didn't, no one benefits. Nobody benefits here.
We're glad you're here, Jamie.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
So, I'll entertain a motion.
You still haven't taken the vote on the...
Oh, I apologize. Let's keep right ahead. All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you for...
That's all right.
So, I guess I'll entertain a motion to, how best to put it...
Sure. I'd be happy to offer a suggestion based on my understanding of the proceedings as have been conducted to date, Mr. Chairman. I sense that, and it's strictly the Board's call. You disregard anything I'm going to suggest, but I would offer the following. A motion that the dog named Lincoln shall remain housed or harbored outside the territorial limits of the town of Foxborough and shall not be brought back within said town limits for the remainder of its life. And number two, for purposes of the prospective application of the order within other municipalities within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, that Lincoln shall be restrained indefinitely as follows. And I would suggest that the restraints consist of Lincoln being humanely muzzled and securely leashed at all times, whenever outside or off of the owner or keeper's property. And number two, that Lincoln be securely confined indoors or confined outdoors in a securely enclosed and locked pen or dog run upon the owner or keeper's premises.
Mr. Chairman, just a one clarification of that. That would only apply if brought back into Massachusetts.
That's correct. That's correct.
Hopefully, we're protecting other communities.
That's correct.
Within Massachusetts.
Correct.
Because, and the reason why that needs to be explained is because the laws that are being applied only pertain to communities in Massachusetts. So, if, in fact, Lincoln is now living in New Hampshire, it's a different set of rules. So, and so, if, in fact, he is retrained and he is found to be, you know, acceptable in terms of his behavior going forward, it might be a different application.
That's right. Wouldn't be, it wouldn't be enforceable beyond the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
I have to admit, you did a heck of a lot better job than I could have done.
Complicated material.
Casey, comfortable?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the only other thought that I had had, and just to kind of toss around, is since we do have the option of enforcing that the owner or keeper of the dog provide proof of insurance, I think that's a good thing just to kind of consider, just in case he does come back into Massachusetts. That kind of covers any possible future incidences that could happen with another owner, so...
Again, just...
If it was Massachusetts.
If it's just in Massachusetts, correct.
Portion of that.
Correct. So, outside of Massachusetts, obviously, that doesn't apply.
Okay. Okay. Can we say so moved or does it have to...
Yeah, you can say, that's been put in the form of a motion, so all you need is a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Great. Thank you. I know it was long and adjuvant for everybody. Yeah, it was, it was timeless. But thank you all. Thank you for zooming in also, Jamie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
You want to stick around for the next one?
David, thank you very much.
Thanks, Casey.
For those of you that are zoomed in, if you're not familiar, you can just click Leave Meeting in the bottom corner. Okay, I know you know Jamie.
There you go.
I would have had no idea. All right. 8:00, we're a little early, but we could talk about change of venue.
Right. So, we all know that town meeting is coming up, and with all the COVID-19 restrictions, the biggest challenge we face is to make sure we have a venue large enough that can provide safe and adequate spacing of six feet apart between individuals if they attend the meeting. So, it was brought to my attention, and then... So it was brought to my attention, uh, and then offered to me, uh, through, uh, the craft organization that if, in fact, uh, that another community had actually inquired about the use of the fieldhouse uh, up at Gillette Stadium to, to use for a possible venue for town meeting. What did, um, and so as a result, I, you know, I asked if, if that was acceptable, could I actually put that, that offer out to the board for consideration? And they, they said certainly. I mean, of course, Foxborough being the, the home of that facility, we certainly would have, uh, for, uh, consideration. Turns out that, that the meeting in Walpole is on the 22nd. Our, our meeting is scheduled for the 15th of June. So, so the, the question, uh, so I, I did a couple of things. I then notified the town clerk of that possibility. I then know, I obviously, uh, I then told the, the board individually that, that this was going to be something that we would want to bring up for discussion on Tuesday night. And then also, um, and notified Frank Spillane, the, the town moderator, to, to see what his thoughts were on that. His, uh, he, he certainly wanted to hear if, if the board had any, uh, what, had any concerns about it. So he wanted to make sure that the board was comfortable with that. And then, but he did ask one question. He said, you know, since we've already posted the, the warrant, um, is there, in fact, relief on, or is there ability for us to actually change the location of the meeting even though, even after the meeting has been posted? So that's a question I've asked, uh, Mr. Costello to be here tonight to, to hang around for this discussion as well. Because, um, obviously, we wanted to make sure we do it right wherever it's held. First, but I think first and foremost, we, we, we need to determine if, if, in fact, that's an option that this board, uh, supports. And if there's other questions or concerns about it, now's the time to, to bring it forward.
Uh, any thoughts? Leah, were you able to hear all of that?
I was, yeah, and I did have one thought that I already kind of discussed with Bill. Um, I don't know if others had the same question or concern, just to make sure, Pat, that there's no conflicts on the warrant?
There aren't, there are, there are no, there are no issues pertaining to the craft organization.
Yes.
Or Route One or kind of anything. That was kind of my only, I think it's a great idea, it's, it's awesome. That was just the only question that I had.
The only.
Go ahead, Donal.
Yeah, the only comment that Bill and I talked about a couple of times was, of, um, all the town meetings that I can remember, this is the smallest and least controversial agenda. Uh, we struggle at times, sometimes to get a quorum. So I don't, that auditorium at the high school, whole 750 people, um, I don't know how many people we're going to get out for a town meeting during this time of year, COVID-19. I personally don't think we have to worry about, you know, an overflow of people. But that's just my.
Chris is 100% right, I mean, it's not a controversial warrant.
Yeah, there's nothing.
There's nothing really that, I mean, I'm, I'm sure there'll be some questions on it. I mean, there's, there's rarely a meeting that ever goes by without some level of questions. But, but in terms of controversy, there wasn't, there isn't anything that's really going to draw people out that I know of on the agenda that would, uh, bring people together for this, for a discussion.
Uh, if we did have it at the townhouse, a townhouse, the, uh, fieldhouse, uh, obviously, uh, full, uh, amplification and microphones and, uh.
Proper seating, of course, so.
Right, chairs set up, so they're six feet apart, but.
So irrespective, uh, so either irrespective of what location, we still need to talk about the logistics of how we set that up. And that's a conversation we'll have with, uh, the moderator, with yourself, uh, maybe the, the town clerk. I know the town clerk. And, uh, and maybe our facilities people as well to, to figure out how we do that.
Easiest way is just tag the chairs.
Yep, every, every two or three chairs or something like that.
Put a yellow, uh, sticky on the back and. And, uh, obviously, we can't be up all on the stage. I'd volunteer for the selectmen to be out in the audience if, uh.
Just the chairman be on the stage.
I'm not sitting up there either, if that's the case.
And, um, Doc, I had another thought kind of along those lines. Sorry, I, I don't want to jump in if you're going to go around. It's just hard when you're on Zoom to kind of chime in.
No, go ahead.
Um, you know, along the lines of what Chris said, I actually had a thought. I wonder if, you know, I was worried about us making a quorum and I wonder if we'd actually have more people come out for the change of venue to, you know, check out the fieldhouse and such. So, um, you know, just thinking on the positive side with.
That's like, that's like flipping a coin.
Yeah, that's right.
That could go either way.
It could go either way, though, that's, that's the thing. And it, and it's interesting, you know, you raised that point and it's, and, and Chris and I talked about that, that could go be either, either way. The issue, though, is we really want people to come to, to be vested in the town's business. I mean, that's, that's really the important thing.
Not to go to a destination.
Exactly.
Town meeting.
Exactly, so, I mean, but it is, it is, it's a, it's a valid thought, though.
I watched that municipal webinar on Friday, didn't they? I think they talked about, um, lowering the quorums for town meetings.
They're trying to, but they've not actually passed the legislation yet to, to, to make that happen. And it's interesting because, you know, we have an open town meeting and we do have a, a, a quorum of, of 100. And the question I had about that is that, you know, once you set the number, say you say it's 50 instead of 100, what do you say to the people that show up beyond that? You know, so, I mean, you, it's not like, I don't think you can put a limit on the upper end, but you can't, but you certainly can lower it. So it means you don't have to have, you can, you can have a meeting if you have less than 100. But you can't put a limit on the upper end of that if you wanted to have more.
Now, and I don't think you would want to. I think you just need to establish what the minimum threshold.
Right.
For a quorum would be.
Well, I guess, coming full circle, Pat, can we change the venue?
Yes, uh, it is within the, the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen to determine the place for the town meeting. Both by general law, under Chapter 39, Section 9. When the board initially issues the warrant, you have to state the time and place of the meeting as well as the, the articles. And you have a bylaw, actually, uh, Chapter 30, uh, Section 30 dash 2, that provides that the town meeting shall convene at a suitable and convenient place designated by the selectmen. So it is clear that it's the selectmen's prerogative to determine the place. And I don't think there's any distinction by virtue of the fact that.
It's already been posted.
The warrant's been posted, because as you know, I mean, should the board choose, you could reopen the warrant anytime you want to, to amend it. And secondly, I think if notice were posted, whether by publication or on your, your website, uh, the same manner in which the warrant was posted, that the location was being changed, I think that's more than adequate public notice, uh, to, to meet the notification requirement.
Don't, don't we have additional latitude because, because we're still under an emergency act?
Well, in, in my respect, Dave, I'm not.
Well, for public safety and the, the health of the citizens, we, we should have the, I would think you, you'd have some latitude to be able to conduct a meeting in a venue that's, that's conducive for the maximum safety of the public.
Correct.
Yeah, like if we're not even allowing gatherings of, you know, over 50 by that time, how do we hold town meeting with that many people? Are we exploring alternatives? Like, you know, I don't know if any other communities, I've read some articles, but not had a chance to dive in as far as remote or, um, you know, just kind of out of the box alternatives.
Well, well, I think that's what the town, uh, the fieldhouse allows us to do, is still socially distanced, but with a bigger venue to, to maybe accommodate more people.
But what she was going at is if, like, right now, you can't have a public gathering of over, what, 10 people?
Right, that question still remains to be addressed. In fact, I actually was on a call earlier today with the Lieutenant Governor and the MMA, and I actually raised that question. I'm hoping that's going to be addressed in, in, uh, in the May 18th. Because they haven't, they didn't answer it because they're waiting for the, for the May 18th regulations to come out. And I'm, I'm hoping that'll be addressed at that point.
So, how about other alternatives, though, that are, you know, aside from other locations? Are there, let's say we're still in a, in a, um, a state that we're not allowed to gather over 50 people, let's say. Is there anything that we can do or other towns have done? I thought I read something about somewhere on the Cape or maybe the city of Weston's looking into some alternatives about, um, you know, non-in-person options.
That would only work for a representative town.
Yeah, that, that is exactly right. Uh, in some, in the, in the representative form, Leah, they are looking into the possibility of doing Zoom-type town meetings. Whereas an open town meeting, you, you just don't know who that would apply to, so you wouldn't. I mean, you could, I suppose you could leave it just as an open channel that people could join. Problem is that you don't know who's going to show, how many people are going to do it. And, um, I don't know if there's any technological limitations of that, of doing it that way.
Or, or voting by paper or something like that, you know?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, my, my understanding is that Wellfleet, down in the Cape, which maybe who Leah is referring to, was thinking of implementing a remote town meeting. And they, they have an open town meeting, they don't have representative. And I think once they look into the minutiae of it, the details, they decided it, it was just too fraught with potential problems. So they, I think they abandoned the idea.
Thanks, Pat.
Uh, got a little bit of time to make that decision. Certainly, you know, uh, our next board meeting is going to be after the 18th.
Yeah, and my only concern about that, you gotta, we gotta work on the logistics, though. And that, and that would require, uh, some consideration sooner or later.
You'd like to see a vote today?
At least some direction as to where you'd like to see it, because then we can start working on the details.
Depending on what the limitations and guidelines are by the state.
Right.
Um, any other thoughts of?
Dave, Ed, you guys have any other thoughts on this?
No, I mean, the, the only other option would be to limit the amount of people that, that are allowed in the high school and do it in, in different, different areas. You know, maybe different schools.
Well, one of the things that the, uh, that the moderator, uh, Frank had indicated was that, he, he kind of played the idea of doing it at, at the Ahern, where you have the, the auditorium, then you, that which backs up to the cafeteria, uh, or the gym that backs up the cafeteria, I guess this was what it is. Auditorium, they back up to each other. So you could maybe have it in both rooms if, if you had an overflow crowd.
And, and, uh, closed-circuit TV.
Yes, right.
Because we, we certainly had that.
That's been done before in this.
Right, that's been done a, a number of times before, especially when the Pats re.
Yes.
Back again.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, so you really, there's three options that are really, uh, for, up for consideration. One is to stay at the high school. The second is to consider possibly the Ahern, and the third is to go to the fieldhouse.
So I, I guess we really have to ask cable access, you know, what, logistically, what, what works for them?
Well, they don't televise it.
Not live?
Not live.
They, they tape, they do tape it, they do tape it.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen Mike and his crew in every venue in the state.
Oh, I know, you know, they have the, they have the mobile truck.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are there any fees associated with, you know, any?
Like saying, yeah, thumbs up, we can do it either way, so.
I think the only fees would be, you know, like, especially if we have it at, at any of the schools, there's always fees associated with it, you know, set up and custodial and overturn and stuff like that.
We typically absorb those internally. The craft group had indicated that they would, they would work with us on the, on the, on the rest of it, that, that the fieldhouse, if they needed to, uh.
Bob and Frank both okayed the, the fieldhouse, they were okay?
They both didn't, uh, there wasn't, there wasn't a major objection. I think the issue was, can we do, can we change the venue after it was posted? In, which we can.
Yes.
And then the second thing is, um, uh, was there, uh, how did the board feel about? Because it's ultimately your call for the location of the meeting.
Again, I go back to what you and I talked about. I, there's nothing on this warrant that's controversial that will draw a crowd. We struggle at times to get a quorum, so I don't see, and I appreciate the offer from the craft.
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great offer, it's a really nice offer.
But I, I don't really see the need to be searching for a different venue. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, I, uh, sort of have to agree with you. Keep the status quo. Leah, we're, we're all like shaking our head. Do you need a vote from us or is this just a shake of the head?
Well, if it's, is, and, yeah, I think, I don't know.
It's a status quo.
It's a status quo, yeah, it's a status quo, then there's no vote taken, they do it, so at this point, so.
So we're all shaking our head, yeah, keep the status quo, Leah, are you, uh, okay with that?
Yeah, I don't feel passionately either way. I'd say, uh, you know, whatever Frank and whatever's easier for Bob, really, and, you know, keeping it the same.
Yeah, I, I think let's keep it at the same and, uh, just now you've got time to think about the logistics of.
Great.
Who's up on the stage and, uh.
Appreciate that.
Hey, you don't know.
You don't know, I know.
You don't know yet.
That election hasn't taken place yet.
Seven days removed from that date, so we'll see.
I'm trying, I'm trying.
Alright, well, thank you for that, thank you for that direction, I appreciate it.
Good conversation, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, um, Mike, you're up. We're going to be talking about the, uh, the process for the town manager evaluation. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
So.
I have one comment. Mike, hold on, when, when he first joined, I'm like, who's this guy on the Zoom? Didn't recognize you.
I had to go full there too.
Thanks, thanks, Pat, appreciate it, thank you.
Very much.
Go ahead, Ben.
So, the, um, so the process, I, I have sent the, um, the self-evaluation form, same one we've used for a number of years, to, uh, to Bill, he's returned it to me. But before sending it out to the board, I wanted to discuss the process with you, not so much the, the, uh, evaluation tool, but the process. So, uh, and then turn it over to you as the board to, to discuss. Uh, what I envision is, uh, sending out the, the evaluation, Bill's self-evaluation, and then the blanket evaluation for you to fill out. Return it, uh, addressed both to the chairman and myself and send that back a week from today. And then the chairman and I get together, um, in the next three days after that, that following week. Um, so to give you dates, um, we return the, uh, the evaluations by May 19th. Give, uh, Chairman Elfman and myself, the 20th to the 22nd, to get together to open the individual evaluations and to summarize them and then present them back to you, the board, on your next board meeting, which is May 26th.
Yeah, and, and just as a, you know, Thursday, the 21st works great for me because I'm off all day.
Okay, I'll circle the 21st.
Okay.
So Chairman, I don't have, I'm not going to comment on, on the process per se, but I just, one thing I think that's really important that we have not actively done in, in the past several years, even though there's been enough stuff to fulfill my, my day every day to, with stuff going on, is just to really set some clear objectives and goals. I think that's really important, uh, for the, for the upcoming year. I mean, it, it could be very clear that there's, there's a few things that are going to take up a lot of time. Uh, one being, you know, how do we, how do we, you know, uh, reengage after COVID-19? It's going to take up a lot of time unto itself, but there's going to be other things we work on. And I want to make sure that everybody's on the same page collectively and that we all agree on what the, what the right direction is. And so we should set a, set a time even after the evaluation's over. And, uh, Mike and I will, will certainly work on, with, with Christina to set a date so we can work on setting goals for the upcoming year. We need to do that earlier rather than later, because doing it late in the process obviously creates a problem to try and get everything done.
Does, uh, everybody, uh, understand the process?
I do, I just, I had a couple of comments, of course, sorry. I don't know if you want to take them now or later.
That was fine.
Take them now.
Okay, um, so you guys may remember, you know, this was, uh, something that I pushed a lot last year, having the paper form, I feel like we've kind of gone back. Um, it makes for tallying, averaging, even comments a little bit more difficult. So, you know, we're kind of a year later still with no online system. Um, and the same feedback I gave last year, I feel like the form that we're using is kind of just a generic form for anyone that's a department head. So, um, one of the criteria I mentioned last year from Section 3E, keeps town manager informed of issues, needs and operations. Some of this evaluation form does read to me like it's department head Some of this evaluation form does read to me like it's department head, and it's not necessarily customized to the town manager. So I would, you know, ask maybe, Mike, if you can really look these over, and, I mean, that's just my opinion. I don't think, it throws off the average if we're evaluating him on how he keeps the town manager informed. So I'd ask you to kind of scrub this, and maybe look at what makes sense, or what language needs massaging for a department head versus town manager before it comes to us.
My thought, and I do remember comments on that before, but an evaluation tool or instrument wasn't agreed to before this. Happy to do whatever the board decides, but I think it's probably appropriate, if there's going to be a new evaluation tool, for that to be part of the goal-setting for the next year, and then agree to that tool upfront and move forward for the next 12 months with that. And I actually agree with you. I think there are ways that it can be improved, and I can, I can put something in front of you right after this evaluation period, and you as the board, take that up if, you know, if that's your desire.
So, Mike, I think one of the things that Leah is pointing out, though, is there is specific language in that form, and I apologize for not letting you know, but I actually corrected it, and when I did the self-evaluation, to say that keeps the board of selectmen informed, not the town manager form, keeps the board of selectmen informed, and I actually removed, there was actually two lines there, one, I think it was an E and an F, one was keeps department head informed, and then keeps the town manager informed, there's two separate. So I just changed one of them to say keeps the board of selectmen informed of what's going on on a daily basis. So that was, I didn't, I don't think I shared that with you, but I just want to make you aware of that. And I think that's what Leah is referring to in that one, in that one point. There may be others, too. I don't see too many other areas, though, that were, that were really conflicts in terms of what could be evaluated, even if it was me or a department head for that matter. But, and certainly there could be other areas that we could add or subtract from that form, no question.
Yeah, I think we just need to really understand how we're averaging it before we get started, because pieces like that, that are not applicable, you know, how does that count to come up with an average? So I think that you deserve the clarity, and we deserve the clarity, to understand when you're, you know, dealing with hand tabulation and things that aren't applicable, what that looks like in the end before we get started.
Understood.
Did you have another comment, too, Leah?
No, that was it.
Okay. Any other comments?
No, just as far as evaluation is concerned, I always view the evaluation as really just a guide, but the most important component of the evaluation is the comment section under each, under each criteria, because that's where the meat is. The points are the points, you know, kind of arbitrary, but the meat's in the comment section, so.
The other part to go along with that.
To write a comment in each section and be as truthful as you can, so.
So I guess that, that kind of, you know, Dave, if you look at the form, the way the form is right now, there's nowhere to allow for comments. So besides, like, I made an Excel sheet last year that kind of went along with it, but maybe you guys could take this and get it in a format that has a comment section where we could type them in, just, you know, user-friendly. It became a little tedious going back and forth to Excel to correlate the comments to the form.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, I think, Mike, didn't you send out two forms, one with Bill's comments on them, and then a form that is blank for comments?
So I did not send both yet. I didn't send the one with Bill's comments yet, I just sent the blank out today.
So there is, there are blank spots for comments?
And it does expand when you write into the form, so electronically, it will expand as you write on it.
Okay.
So it does allow you for that. So I'll just go back to that, you know, the, I put extensive comments in, but I don't, I don't self-evaluate myself personally, I don't put the scores down, I let others decide that. But I just put the comments as they relate to that particular section, as to what I've done during the past year and what, how I view them.
Well, I guess that's, you know, maybe we're doing it differently, but if you have the form in front of you, there's like the top part that goes over, you know, each section, five, and then A, B, C. I was putting a comment for each one, not just the comments kind of down below for overall and professional development and comments for employee. You know, like you said, I think it's important to comment on each of those individually, and although the form allows for some wrap-up comments at the end, I don't think that it easily allows a user, like, I created a spreadsheet to comment on each individual one. So, you know, if we are working by form, I'm just thinking of a way it's just a little bit easier to use, and then, you know, even for Bill to read, to just see it all on one sheet versus having to have, you know, an Excel spreadsheet to kind of map it up to.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Leah. Thank you, Mike.
Okay, can I make one other comment?
Yep.
So Leah, I do recall, and Chris Mitchell will also recall, as he was chair reviewing this last year with me, that you did attach comments, and those were very helpful, and we went through and included those. And going along with what Dave Feldman said, the comments are very important, and the other part that goes along with that is the debrief, sitting down and doing, you know, there's the summary debrief, you know, in front of the camera, which would be, you know, if you agree to it two weeks from tonight. But then after that, either before or after that, the individual sit down with each board of selectmen member with the town manager privately, so that you can review, dig deeper, give suggestions, or even come up with possible goals that later the board could agree to. Also, one other thing is that we do have in the budget this year to go back to an online electronic version. I hope that we don't lose that in the budget this year, but it is put into the central finance department IT budget. So we are looking to go back to online evaluations for, starting July 1st.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Then we'll go back to you, Mike, for Assistant Town Manager's report.
Okay, the main thing is to follow on with what Bill started the meeting on, and that is the reopening plan. So we have had three meetings over the last couple of weeks, discussing with representatives from each municipal building, what considerations need to be taken into account, and also looking at what are our professional associations across the Commonwealth suggesting, as well as what are folks in the state administration, either mandating or suggesting. And that stuff is still coming in, and we're looking to, you know, to continue taking input from staff, and as Bill mentioned, from residents, from the board, and come out by the end of this week with a draft version of what it looks like to open up, you know, in phases. And we really do look to see, you know, folks who are working remotely, we look to bring them back in phases, and then after that, you know, look at what does it look like for boards and committees to start reusing, you know, meeting rooms, and when might that happen? We don't know that yet, as well as when might different buildings be available for the public to visit, and what are the precautions we need to take, you know, as far as things similar to what you're seeing in the grocery stores and the pharmacy with the taped-off lines, the hand sanitizer, all those sort of considerations. So that's the main thing on the plate for this week.
Thank you, Mike. Bill?
Thank you, Mike, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. So earlier today, I had a phone conversation with Lieutenant Governor and the MMA on COVID-19 impacts and reopening plans, as Mike just mentioned. The state's plan will be coming out on Monday, and that will be industry, that will be industry-specific. We have been collecting ideas from towns, employees, and government consultants on what our plan should look like. Mike and I are looking to have a draft of our plan by Thursday, Friday of this week. Reopening will be significantly different than what we have all been used to seeing. If any one of the board members or community members has any good ideas, please let us know. The plan will undoubtedly be a phased plan that is consistent with federal and state guidelines. Tomorrow's, tomorrow morning, I will be in a meeting with the operations team to get further ideas on how we can refine all of our plans. Tomorrow afternoon, I will be on a call with Senator Elizabeth Warren to talk about the federal government response and how they can help cities and towns in Massachusetts. Earlier today, congressional Democrats filed a $3 trillion relief package that includes $1 trillion in aid for cities and towns. That bill will be brought up on Friday with the entire House for debate. While it may pass along potty lines, the bill will likely run into opposition in the Senate, though many believe that some sort of compromise bill will emerge that could help with local government. On Thursday, I will be on a call with the Trittown Chamber of Commerce, along with Senator Feeney, Representative Barrows, and town managers from Mansfield and Norton, talk about what our potential reopening plans will look like. That will occur at 3:30. At 2:30, I'll be talking with several local government officials about what local government might look like into the future, and based on what we've, based on what we've just been experiencing. Earlier today, I met with the Finance Director, George Samir, and we are putting together some further thoughts about what to present at the meeting tomorrow night with the Advisory Committee, the Board of Selectmen, and the School Committee for the Fiscal 2021 Budget. It should come as no surprise that the traditional Memorial Day ceremonies have been canceled, but they do, but that day will not be forgotten. In honoring, remember, in lieu of the Memorial Day Parade, in live ceremony, in live ceremony, a prerecorded Memorial Day ceremony, when cemetery ceremonies will be aired on Foxborough Cable Access on Memorial Day, Monday, May 25th. Honor and remember by hanging a flag, placing a light in your window, Sunday, May 24th through Monday, May 25th. And you can decorate your door, yard, bikes, and be creative to show you remember. Veterans Services encourage using terms like "we remember," "I remember," "we will not forget," "honor and remember." Submissions of "Happy Memorial Day" will not be used, as this is not the proper way to acknowledge that day. You can send a photo or video of your display by Monday, May 20th, to veterans@foxboroughma.gov, and submissions will be included in the prerecorded ceremony. You can contact the Veterans Service Office with questions via email or by calling (508) Yesterday, the Public Works Department worked with ACV Enviro to do the first Household Hazers Waste Day from the curbside. We had a lot of positive responses to this new approach that DPW put together in short order. Congratulations to them for a creative way to address a need in the community during a COVID-19 crisis. And also earlier today, I met virtually with the Barrows School Building Committee. The school is making tremendous progress, and one significant positive thing that's come out of the COVID-19 crisis is that the early closing of school will actually allow the building project more time to accomplish what they need to get done during the summer months, because that was clearly going to be a crunch time. As Bill Yugner indicated today, they probably about 14 weeks were worth, but they were going to try and squeeze into 10. This allows them more time to actually get that work done, so I think it'll actually work out pretty nicely. And last Friday, I took a tour of the new Regional 911 Center construction. That project has not been delayed by any of the COVID issues, and has actually been helped by, in some ways, by having some of the contractors who are working on projects in Boston come out here and help on this project, and to help that get done. Right now, we appear to be on track for early fall opening. The one challenge that we can foresee is that some of the technology might get delayed in getting here. And last but not least, I just want to give a shout-out to all the public safety personnel who are doing such a great job during this crisis. They have actually, they have collectively served the town in their usual professional and service-oriented manner, and we all appreciate them being, appreciate them being out there and on the front lines during this very difficult time. So thanks to them for doing the work that they do, to all of us, keeping us safe here in this community. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anything for Selectmen's update?
I just have one. I had a call from Earl Ferguson a week or two ago, Foxborough resident. He takes care of the garden down at the farm stand. He plants it every year, attends to the field. So farm stand is not going to be opening this year, but Earl wanted to let me know and to pass along to the board and the general public that he had already ordered all the seeds for the field and everything. His plan is to till it up, plant the seeds, and then, once everything's ready to harvest, he's going to donate it, he's going to deliver it to veterans, deliver it to anybody that needs it. At the end of the day, he'll leave a bushel basket out there. So I just want to thank Earl for all of his hard work on that.
That's great. Maybe coordinate with Mark at the senior center, too.
Yeah, you could probably just deliver some there.
Yeah, because they had those eggs that they were giving away at one point.
Yeah.
I just have one thought. Chris, you're involved with the signs on both ends of the common. Maybe update the town with those signs when town meeting and town elections are.
Yep, we'll coordinate that.
Because I, I mean, the ones that have been up for a while, but with the change of venues and change, maybe town election and then town meeting up there for the next three or four weeks.
Actually, no change of venue at this point, no change.
But no change of venue, change of date.
Change of dates, yeah, change of dates.
Yeah. And obviously, that flashing sign that's at the end of Mechanic Street on the Rotary. Change that up, too.
It's not Rotary, it's common.
And is it uptown or downtown? Sorry. Any other thoughts? There we go. Leah, you good?
I had, no, I did have a couple, sorry. So the appointments, I feel like we, that kind of fell off the agenda for this week, but I think we need to put it back on to kind of discuss it. I talked to Bill about some of those. I think a couple are kind of out of compliance with how they're written in the code. Someone reached out to me in particular about one board. Bill, I don't know if you had a chance to read into it to see if you agreed with that analysis, but I think it is something that we do need to have some discussion at the table about a couple of boards, how we proceed. So maybe we can get some info in board docs for next time.
Just on that thought, Leah, it didn't fall off the, it was postponed till two weeks. Christina needed a little bit more time.
Yeah, so we actually have.
I think there's some discussions we can have, though, before, I think there's some discussions that we need to have as a board, too, though, before we probably move to a point, so I think, you know, we probably could have had those and then appointed next time, but we can, we can always discuss that. And then the other thing that Bill and I talked about, and Mike, I apologize if, I don't want to put you on the spot if you weren't aware, I was going to ask, was about some of the contracts that are outstanding, so we all got an email about, if you can maybe just speak to, is there any exposure there, or anything that we need to consider, you know, with certain union contracts that are pending, you know, kind of along the lines of the appointments due to COVID-19 that we need to think about or consider.
Okay, I am prepared to talk about, and maybe this is what you mean, is the, as far as people getting steps? Is that what you meant?
Not necessarily that specifically, just, you know, due to COVID, if any of these agreements are kind of delayed, you know, due to that, is there anything that we need to think about? I wasn't even really planning on getting into any specifics on any contract at all.
So I think what we, Mike and I talked about this is an issue, but I think what we're just looking to just announce, everybody, is that we made several attempts to try and meet with the unions prior to COVID-19, but they were delays for various reasons, and nobody's blaming anybody for that. But what happened was that after COVID-19 hit, we couldn't do, meet at all with the union, so that was, as a result, we are delayed. We did not have agreements with the steelworkers and with the police officers at this time. But we will, you know, as soon as the opportunity presents itself, we certainly will get back to them and deal with them, so.
But that's also not an uncommon event.
No, no, that happens, it happens, it actually happens all the time, right. It's not uncommon to see that, that you'll see a contract get delayed, but there is no, there'll be no cost-of-living adjustment for either one of those contracts until those agreements are reached.
So, you know, what did happen is both unions did reach out with a letter, you know, wanting to start negotiations, but, you know, the steelworkers were unable to come to the table, you know, for the first two months of the calendar year, and after that, we were into the COVID-19. And then with the, with the police or other reasons, we couldn't move along in negotiations, and again, get bogged down. So those will, you know, we're going to aim to, to try to negotiate both of those contracts for the fall, and, you know, those contracts will stay in place as they are, as Bill mentioned, with no COLAs, but, you know, folks that do a step, we still get a step. And there's a term for it, it's called status quo ante, and that's part of Massachusetts' general law, that, you know, a contract, you know, remains in effect as it is, except for other provisions like the COLA.
Okay, Ed? Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Could you put Leah up, so we could see her raise her hand?
I'm adjourning.
Okay, you're good, all right, good, we just wanted to see your hand.
Thank you.
Good night, Mike, good night, Leah. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.